All right, great. We are now on the record, November 22, 2022 work session. Jamie, could you call the roll and read the sunshine statement, please?
Be advised that proper notice is being given by the Township Council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner: Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on March 1, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mrs. Apia Do?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrow?
Here, thank you. First up, we are going to walk on an executive session. This is going to be Resolution 2022-208, executive session to discuss potential litigation. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved, Tom Lyon.
I'll second.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Apia Do?
Here.
Yes, we're voting on the resolution 2002-208 for an executive session. Yeah, so we need a yes or a no? Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution's adopted. Do you want to do it in here or go in this closed?
Wherever you prefer.
I guess we'll do it here, right? No one's in here.
Yeah, do you want to close the door?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just do it in here so we don't have to get up. Yes, where do you want me to just pick up where I left off? Yes, please.
So just a case in point with that, this, when we talked about the roads a few months ago, we thought we'd have to fund for Haynes Mill that we wouldn't have enough. Well, fortunately, right now we do, so at this point in time, I don't know if they had any more ridge next year. There'll be sewer work, substantial degree of sewer work to be done. And knowing that number, then you could also appropriate funds through the sewer capital part of it as well. And you would know that upfront. So if we wish to proceed, what I'd like to do is ask to approve a bond ordinance during the month of December. And more on that in a minute. The design estimate right now is about $300,000 for both projects. And keep in mind with Stewart, although we're going to do that road in phases, the design cost that I put for this for the entire road, you just can't design it in a piecemeal fashion. So when it comes time to fund the actual work, we'll have the amounts. We'll also have to provide for a fee too for construction administration for the engineers. So that's pretty much it. So if you're on board, I've spoken to bond counsel, I've spoken with our auditor as well. This could be accomplished during the month of December.
Effectively, great stuff, you did it in Hodel, right?
I did it in Freehold.
In Freehold, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I mean, it's just moving, it allows us to get the bids out earlier, it allows us to get the roads done earlier. So it just ultimately ends up saving us money as the game plan. So I think it's a no-brainer.
Do you have a plan to fund that?
Well, no, we have to amend the capital budget and go ahead and adopt the bond ordinance. As bond counsel, we'll have to put something together, and they have sufficient time to do it.
There's going to be a little bit of a shake in the beginning, but then once it becomes natural for us, it won't be a problem.
So this discussion we're having in November for December action, probably next year we're talking about it in September for an October action, to even move it up even faster. So essentially, right now, if everything's approved, these guys aren't going to start doing work until January anyway, but they at least have two solid months to work through at least Redstone Ridge, Pine Valley, Drew and Randall. You can't, we could start the design on Stewart, but there's not much work that can be done until we get word from NJDOT on the grant, which we really should have received by now.
We should be hearing back any day now.
Yeah, we usually get it before Lexi, they usually.
So the question with that, Joe, is if council's inclined, which I think is a good idea, is we would need to, a first reading of the ordinance would be our next meeting.
Well, that's the problem, that's the problem.
And then we need, we want to get it done before the end of the year, and there's not enough time for notice between our first December meeting and our second, right? So if anyone wants to propose, and this is a question for legal, a quick Zoom meeting one day, the week of the fifth, right, Joe?
They still do Zoom, right?
So we still do, I knew that was only permitted sometime during like the residency or something like that.
No, 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 it's folks, entities all over the place, we're still Zooming away.
Okay.
Sewer authorities, housing authorities, schools, all kinds of folks are still Zooming. If you have a option provided, that is another choice, but if it's strictly a Zoom session, you need to advertise it correctly. Other than that, you get my understanding, is it still?
Perfect. Great. And Jamie's skilled with the Zoom advertisement. So I guess, Joe, you want to break out the, I mean, is that something we can all pull out our calendars now, see if everyone's available that week?
Can we do something like five o'clock, or you know, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the meeting will take ten, I mean, five minutes. Probably take longer to call and roll than than to do anything else.
You folks pick. The week of the fifth.
I would just ask that it's not the, Wednesday is bed for me, Thursday is the senior citizen's Christmas party.
You qualify?
Yeah, I do, as a matter of fact. What does everyone's Monday look like?
Two things.
What time is Monday? Yes, Tuesday's six, five. What about Tuesday? All right, let's just do December 6 at five. Is that okay with everybody?
Sounds good. Jamie, you good?
Yeah, I think that should be plenty of time.
That's three weeks.
Get it advertised.
No.
The 20th is public, second reading, and adoption will be the 20th, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're good then, right?
Yeah, I can get it advertised in plenty of time.
So you said the day, you said the day, you said the fifth?
The fifth.
And then you have the 20th?
Oh, no, we said the sixth.
The sixth, but you have a line between first and second reading?
Yes, there's more than 10 days.
You said the 20th.
The 20th, yeah, yeah.
Jamie, you just need it for notice in the paper.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I can get it noticed in the paper, we only need 48 hours in a week. So I can get that advertised next week.
Okay, great. All right, so December 6.
And I'll send you the Zoom that we've used in the past, and just make, you know, the place that we've used for Zoom meetings, so you can just make sure everything's okay.
Okay, we're going to go back to our Zoom days, the folks who've been there with us. It'll be quick, it'll be quick.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone have any other questions about that? I think it's a great way to keep the ball rolling. Okay. All right, item B, the Harvard District has been postponed to the next meeting.
Yep.
Next, we have the townwide sewer evaluation. Joe, Ed?
So in conjunction with the engineering costlessness for the road program, it was our recommendation that the township begin doing a township-wide sewer evaluation. The sewer department has the capabilities of CCTVing the infrastructure within town. That being said, it's, there's approximately 64 miles worth of gravity sewer in town, so this isn't something that's going to be able to be done overnight. So we've recommended that approximately $10,000 be budgeted to next year's sewer budget in order for our office to work in conjunction with the sewer department to evaluate the infrastructure, and then ultimately that will help evaluate which roads and what work needs to be done as part of the future road programs in town. Any questions?
No, I think that's shouldn't be a problem. I mean, the sewer budget's pretty healthy, it's my understanding, right, Joe? So we shouldn't have
Yeah, no, this, the
Much of an issue with that.
About $10,000, $1,000 a year.
Okay.
Going forward on the operating side now, that's, we should be okay.
We did, just from a historical perspective, they did do, actually it was CME, did an evaluation 12, 14 years ago, somewhere back then. Just where we were then, it might not be a bad thing if you can dig that up and just see where we've come since then.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Counsel, you doing okay with that?
Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance on sewer lines.
That's the key, that's the key. All right. Thank you, Ed. So we'll get that on, Joe, for next budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Now, at this time, we're going to do our minutes for approval. I'll entertain the approval of minutes from March 22, 2022, and April 26, 2022, for the closed session meeting.
Motion? I'll second.
Thank you, Jamie. Could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Apia Do?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, motion carries, the minutes are approved. Next up is approval of minutes for May 10, 2022, public meeting.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Apia Do?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye.
The ayes have it, minutes are approved. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Is there any objections to the items within the consent agenda?
One question. The police vehicles, are they going to be electric at all? Or are we, do we look at electric vehicles?
We did not, no. We didn't contemplate that at all in this cycle.
We plan down the road to look at electric vehicles?
It's a discussion the chief and I will have to have, and of course, we'll have to talk about down the road, the advantages and disadvantages. I'm sure there are plenty.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, for the, I have to recuse myself from the bill, I'm getting reimbursed for the trump or treat. Do you want me to pull that out of the consent agenda?
So you can throw, I mean, just have it go out of the hole and see if that's, you know, we'll see what happens.
Okay, cool, I just want to make sure. Okay, so there's no objections to the consent agenda, any other questions?
Counsel President, can I just, I know that the change order for the final payment for the Conroe roadway, just want to note, I believe that was a change downward, which is always good, and I'm sure the public is always interested to know that if we have a change order, that means the price went down slightly.
Great, thank you. All right, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion?
I'll second.
Mrs. Apia Do?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Yeah, all abstaining to the bill and being, to the extent that I'm being reimbursed, but the rest, yes. The ayes have it, motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted, and the items within. Finally, we have our reports. First up is our Township Administrator, Joe Bolina. Joe, anything?
Very brief. Today, there was a meeting of our joint insurance fund. Today, there was a meeting of our joint insurance fund. It was announced that we were getting annual dividend of about $68,000. However, our assessment for next year is $723,000 and change. The 2022 assessment was $618,000 and change. The difference is an increase of $105,000 or 17%. So, that's a hard pill to swallow. What they have is something that's called the Municipal Access Liability Residuals Fund. It was organized to provide coverage to the towns for residual risk and what have you. So, the fund voted today to provide $300,000 from that fund in the form of additional dividends to the towns in the JIF to help cushion the blow. So, how much does that mean to us? The original amount of the dividends claimed was, or announced was $900,000, of which we got 68. So, if they're providing another $300,000, does that mean we get another third, or about 20-some thousand? I don't know, and probably won't know that till another week or so. So, we have that, and there's health insurance, which is either going to be 10 or 20% higher. We're still working through another JIF to deal with that. So, it's going to be an exciting budget year for everybody, really. So, with that, happy Thanksgiving.
You've got plenty to think about while you're enjoying turkey, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Next up, our clerk, Jamie Aggers. Jamie, anything?
No, I have no report.
Thank you. Next up, we have our mayor, Mayor Ketchumbone. Anything?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things, all good. I want to thank Joe for keeping us abreast of the ups and downs of the insurance premiums. There's some great things that have happened, and I'll talk about that in a second. But I had the pleasure last week of performing the wedding ceremony for one of our firefighters and a longtime volunteer, Dan Piper, and his wife Janet. They have been fixtures in the program, and they decided to get married. And I had the pleasure of celebrating with them and performing their wedding ceremony right over at the fire department. It was great to see everyone. Like to also, obviously, congratulate the boys soccer team for becoming state champs once again. They are, it's an amazing program. And I also like to unofficially congratulate our three candidates, Nikki, Tom, and Marlo. I'm sure the numbers will be official at any time, but they are not official yet. But Tom and Marlo had an especially hard-fought race. And congratulations to Nikki for her hard work. And echo Joe's comment of happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have a report from our solicitor's office. Mark?
No report, other than happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next up, from our engineer, C and Associates, not Jim Winkowski, as printed.
I will keep it brief. The contract for the 2022 road program is continuing to do concrete work along Notre Dame Drive, and it will be moving to Notre Dame Court next week. And that will ultimately be followed up by paving. And then, the repaving of the treatment plant was completed, and that job will be, it's in the process of being closed out.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have reports from members of council. Councilman Nikki Peidoo.
Well, I just have a few things. One is, I want to thank Joe and his team for getting things done. Like, in Ward One, there was a gentleman who had a tree over his house, and that was done right away. And then, the lady that got her sidewalk, I hope she's happy now, and those were done. Other thing is, two more things. One, the League of Municipalities, the, I think, is it risk management training? That was excellent, and I really enjoyed any case studies. That opened my eyes to a lot of stuff. It helped me understand more on that issue we had earlier. And next thing is, it just went out of my mind, I'm getting old. One more thing. Oh, and the veterans program, thank you so much. That was also another excellent program, and we got an award, you know, just thanks to our fellow ward councilman over here. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Marlo Smith. Councilman?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. Again, I wanted to thank, oh, congratulate the Delaware High School soccer team for winning the championship. It's got to be fantastic. I know it's going to be something that you'll be able to carry with them, you know, for the rest of your lives. They're always champions, so that's fantastic. Second thing is, tomorrow, there's early dismissal for the schools. So, as you're traveling around town, making your last-minute Thanksgiving preparations, please be mindful of, you know, students will probably be out and about in the streets. So, you know, just be careful as you're driving around town. And lastly, to everyone, just have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. End of report.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Lynn Jenny. Councilman?
And Council President, and also, we'd like to congratulate the boys. Again, I would like to also congratulate the boys soccer team. It is a lifelong achievement, because you enjoy it the rest of your life. League of Municipalities was a very good couple-day session. Attended a couple of the work sessions. And also attended the green team's, well, it was the, what do you call, Southern New Jersey, what do they call it? Sustainability, yeah. Southern Jersey Sustainability awarded a bronze award to the green team for all their achievements in town, which are significant. And like to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving as well. That's it, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Vice President of Council, Mr. Vice President Tom Lyons.
Thank you, Council President. Like to echo the congratulations to the soccer team. Also, went to the vet ceremony at the New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And it was well-attended, and it was a great event. And kudos to Lynn for spearheading that and having our town recognize it was a very, very great event. Also, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and be careful, and just be safe out there.
Great, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, just one thing on the training for the JIF. If those, if anybody didn't make it down Atlantic City, they're going to be sending dates for both in-person and Zoom.
Okay. Great, if you could just get, make sure, you'll get this? Okay, yeah, thank you. They always pick weird dates for the in-person one, and they're in Salem County, so try to stay local. All right, from my report, just echoed sentiments to my colleagues. Congratulations to the soccer team on their victory. Also, want to say, I couldn't make the league this year, I had a couple hearings scheduled, but I want to congratulate the green team on their bronze certification. They do a lot of hard work behind the scenes, so we appreciate all the work they do. And as everyone said, we want to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. With that, there's no other reports from anybody. We'll go to the public. I'll entertain a motion to open the floor to the public.
Motion to go to public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For those opposed, motion carries. We are now in public comment. There's only one person here, and it's the chief. Chief, do you have anything? Okay, great. With that, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor.
Motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Our floor is now closed. Now, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.